Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Select Board Meeting six twenty eight, twenty twenty two. I have a call to order. Everyone is here with the exception of Chairman NATO. He was has an excused absence, but we do have a quorum. Could we all please rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amendments to the agenda?
Just the sequence, just the sequence, sir.
Yeah, we're gonna move item seven to in front of item three. We are going to take the setting, the tax rate for twenty twenty two billing prior to the reports from the Fire Chief and Road Commissioner.
Yes, we did.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? In favor? I don't know if we needed to go for that, but that's official. Okay, so setting the tax rate for twenty twenty two billing. We are gonna go and call Ms. Donna Hayes our tax assessor up for her expertise on this matter.
Hi.
Hello.
So what you have in front of you tonight is actually one choice of tax rate. We picked up ten million dollars in new value this year, which is a combination of CMP, New England Clean Energy Connect, lots of new houses, new subdivisions. So it's it made a good impact, which is great. So with a combination of myself doing valuation and town manager doing the appropriations and revenues, if we kept the tax rate exactly as it was last year, we would also have a hundred and thirty five thousand dollar overlay. Our overlays tend to be, last year it was a hundred and seven, maybe a hundred to a hundred and twenty five usually. And I guess that's about it. We are at eighty percent of market value. Our homesteads are gonna be twenty thousand this year. Veterans are forty eight hundred. I also apply the percentage of market value to personal property, tree growth, central rain power, anything else that comes in that's not real estate.
Okay. And our and our current mill rate is?
Twenty seventy.
Twenty seventy.
Yes.
By me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know that I think you're accustomed to having a choice of a low, medium, and a high change.
Correct.
After reviewing with Donna the proposed tax rate of remaining the same, we felt that that was an appropriate way to go, but we're actually increasing the amount of money that we take in because of the increased value of our property over the last year. I think at this point, everyone becomes a winner in the process. The fact is that people, even if they remember what the tax rate was for the previous tax period, we're reminding them now that it's remaining steady. And it allows you to handle any discounts and abatements that may come under appeal. And at the end of next year, that is a way you will also replenish your undesignated fund balance, which gives you a healthy reserve should you ever have a catastrophe. And as is pointed out in the economy in general, some of that extra money may have to go in to help support some of the energy-related issues of our community going forward. As far as projects, as Calvin has pointed out many times, he gets X amount of dollars. He planned on this, to do ten miles. He only got this amount of money. It may only be seven and a half miles. He brings the project back to meet the appropriation at the time. So all things considered, you're moving forward and you're stable.
Thank you.
Therefore, my recommendation would be as we have recommended to you. Retain the tax rate as it has been for two years in a row. This would be the second year. And we have signatures where the blue lines are, and there's a blue pen that you have to sign just to give us the official okay, and we will move forward from there.
I would move to keep our tax rate at twenty dollars, seventy cents, two thousand. For tax rate.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for us to maintain the current tax mill rate of twenty dollars and seventy cents. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Last year was, what was the overlay last year, Donna?
Hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven?
Yes.
That might cover a little bit of inflation there.
Right, yeah, for the fuel.
No, I'm sorry, I'm 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 good.
You're good.
No, I, you know, I would say I would like to see it lowered, but I think under the circumstances, this is more than appropriate.
Okay, we'll call a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work. Jan, any commentary from Deputy Treasurer?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay, I I did originally say we were going to swap out, but we just really just moved up item number seven. So our next up will be now item number four, which is reports from the Fire Chief and the Road Commissioner.
Road Commissioner's here, but our Fire Chief is. Road Commissioner should be showing up.
Problem.
We'll be brief. Usually it's been about once a month that we report, but due to economic times and changing and whatnot, it's been every every meeting. I told you last time we were gonna implement our NFPA three thousand. That's the active shooter protocol countrywide that we go to. There's been no threats. There's been no chatter. It's just being prepared. So we had a training on that, and it's more than active shooter. It's it's called ASHA, Active Shooter Hostile Event, and that could be anything. So the department's been briefed and trained on that. And then the following Thursday, which was last week, we did walk through the school. So we had an alarm recently there. We talked about the panels, strategies and tactics, trucks, sprinklers, and what would happen if an event happened at the school. So just due diligence on today's climate and world, and unfortunately, you have to do it, but but we are ready. Just know we have an active safety committee. It's currently led by Chief Saint Michel, retired Chief Saint Michel, who looks over policies and procedures, gear, gear inspection keeps us honest. We've been working with the town IT on phones and cable and going back and forth on all that. I'm glad Calvin just showed up. I need on the record a thank you to the Public Works. And Calvin, they were doing the yellow lines and spraying the lines, and that's important to us. Not about parking, but that's what lines up all those trucks in the bays, and that's what prevents them from going through the backside. So very important, and I appreciate his due diligence. I think I posted that, but it's the little things in life. So it's yellow paint and lines really helps. Something of interest, I was turned on by one of my guys, the state of Maine unclaimed money. If you've ever gone on that, two of them were under the Durham Fire Department, and that totaled six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty six cents that we did get back, gave it to Janet in two checks, and I think she put it in a general fund. Very difficult to do. You'd think it would be easy, but as the Fire Chief without an address, you know, notaries and and firstborn and whatnot. But but we, just so the townspeople know, due diligence on every penny that is owed to us. So and I'll be looking for that in my my budget next year, but six hundred and nineteen dollars.
Get you a tank of gas.
You know, unfortunately, it's I got a thousand dollar diesel bill. Working with the interim on the opera funds, just sort of heating and cooling and whatnot, I think we can all feel it in here tonight. I'll let Mitch talk about trek across Maine, the bicyclists. I know the the chair, the board chair was in it. I know we followed him just in case in an ambulance wherever he went. That's a joke. That's a joke. With diesel prices, we did not follow him. But there was no issues for us. We did put on extra staff, one extra person, just in case.
Scare him with a siren, I hope.
Well, in case he fell over. And just know that we are actually hiring new members. So we just took one from the Conservation Commission. So in today's climate, we're still attracting members to our small fire department, which was one of my goals. And that's just an testament to the to the townspeople, really. And today I met with the Lisbon Fire Chief last. We'll be helping out, I believe it's July ninth. It's the Moxie Fest Parade. Every year, I guess we send an engine company over there for coverage. The tenth, you probably know, is a fishing derby. That's both above and below the dam. So they'll they'll have boats, Lisbon and Topsom, I'm told, but we'll be on standby. Other than that, that's all I have for you. Any questions? Todd, you usually good for one? No?
No, not tonight.
Okay, I'll take it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And Mr. Road Commissioner?
I warmed up the crowd, Calvin.
And he gave us money back.
How many did we have? Calvin, one more, please?
Oh, I got two. Sorry, I got two.
Okay.
So I left here at the last meeting with a couple of items, homework regarding the stream crossing. I did reach out to the town attorney. He was on vacation. He's back in the saddle tomorrow, but his to ask the question about whether or not we could spend all of the money on one culvert, and the answer was yes from his associate, but he wouldn't put it in writing until Jack got back, and he wanted Jack to do it. So I said, okay, that was helpful. So I called MMA Legal Department. They gave me the same answer. They said that the towns all over the state are in the same boat. They've got money that was allocated to do a two-mile project. They're only gonna be able to do one because of pricing and they're doing it. He said, this would be the same thing. You're getting half the project done, but it's the same project. He said, if you were to go do some other intersection somewhere else that wasn't related, that would be different. But he said, essentially, you're in the same boat as about most every other town in the state. So but he said he would give it to me in writing. I called him back this week, and he said he'd give it to me in writing again, and I still don't have it. So I don't know what it is, but I can get it from Jack if need be. But I think if we back up.
I was waiting.
I think if we back up to the beginning of the of the issue today, got a revised bid from the contractor at two fifty nine, one seventy five, which is another thirty nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars above the previous fifty four thousand, five hundred dollar increase due to the engineering changes. And bottom line is, you know, we haven't had a contract signing. Prices have gone up. And so they're just saying this is what they were for, and they're only holding that bid for five days because of pricing of fuel and things like that. So I just got this today while I was in the chair getting a crown, and I tooed, my phone went off. I pulled it on. Oh, crap. I finally got this back before the meeting. But so I hoped to have this done earlier, but I was in the chair a lot longer than I thought. So it doesn't appear that we would have the time this year to get this done. If you look at the, well, I guess if you look at the attached spreadsheet, that shows where we're at. The shortfall instead of being two thousand like it was before that I could have found in-house is now forty one thousand, six seventy five, which I can't find, which means we would, I assume, Mitch, have to go to a special town meeting and raise the money if that was something the board wanted to do. I don't believe there's time for that because the window of opportunity to do the stream work is only July fifteenth to September thirtieth. They would have to have ten weeks lead time to order the bridge. There's there's no, we're out of we're out of time.
Yeah.
So. So I talked to DEP today again this morning, and he said that we could we could be on the list for August when this new round comes available. There should be more funding. And it would be a shovel-ready project, already permitted, designed. And he thinks it would go right to the front of the list, but that's something I'll have to bring back to you and see if you guys want to pursue it. I could submit it. Doesn't cost anything.
But most likely, it's gonna cost more money if you ask again.
Well, yeah, I mean, when this thing started, when this thing started a couple of years ago, the one twenty five was a good number. It really could get the job done. Now it's less than half what it really costs to get it done, so.
You had to ask the federal government, didn't you?
Yeah, well, and that's the thing. I know last time you guys said, well, the DEP created these increases. They should pay for it. And it really wasn't the DEP. It was the Army Corps of Engineers Federal. He said, DEP, in fact, he said, we don't even require a permit to put it in. It's the Army Corps of Engineers Federal that steps in. And when that happens, DEP's hands are tied, and so is DOT, and so is everybody else's. So so that's where that stands. I'm assuming you guys want to pull this project for the year? Or do you want to wait till?
Did you bring any Novocane with you?
She goes, your face will be sworn. This feels all right. Mitch?
Question. Are there any safety issues that we should attend to between now and whenever the project is ever initiated to protect the public in that area?
Nope, they're functioning. They're functioning. And I mean, the road floods there on a frequent basis, but it's been happening for fifty years, so.
How long's it been since it did? It's been a while, hasn't it?
Been a while. Sometime this winter it did it once, right? Like the late late winter, I think.
If we have a significant flood, that's one of the first spots that goes under is that. That and one twenty five, they're, you probably know, the usual spots, right?
Did you talk about Swamp Road or Swamp?
That goes under.
Yeah, we ended up having we ended up having to turn cones on both sides and everybody around, so.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things we mentioned in the permitting that brought that up to a high scoring level. So it should be. So I guess how do we proceed with that?
How's the rip, the all the riprap and everything around here is holding up well? Because I mean, it's flooded a few times since you repaid it. I'll say the last time you you had upgraded that culvert at one point or that.
When it floods, we have to go down and put some more rocks along the edge of the pavement.
Yeah, yeah, I remember where you did that.
Do again.
So it's probably maybe last spring or last summer, and you did that, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. So how do we proceed? Any suggestions?
Well, Calvin, just for clarification, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is somewhat expedited because grant funds were available. It wasn't an immediate requirement or a necessity, for lack of better words, correct?
Yeah. I just went and identified some projects that would be a good candidate for these funds, and that was one of them.
Yeah, makes sense. Fifty percent match and so forth. I get it.
It was supposed to be a hundred percent.
A hundred percent's even better if you pull out.
But it was a non-managing grant, but, you know, prices have doubled, so.
Might I suggest, given the circumstances that we now know, that this board formally take a motion to direct staff to continue to monitor funding opportunities next round and to bring forth the recommendation to continue that appropriation into the next year at the next town meeting so that we can, as a shovel-ready project, effectively look at the summer of twenty three as an opportunity.
So we can keep the present grant?
No.
No. That would go away.
Goes away.
So you're really rolling the money to hold it?
You give it, take it.
And you're rolling the money just to hold it until you really have to do it?
The town appropriated money, but the grant money we're gonna lose.
We're gonna lose it, right?
So the the new round of money, I when I talked to DEP, he said, these are actually the grant, the 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 next round of funds is opera money. So he said it's got federal fingers into it. He said, so your deadlines of getting the work done are absolute drop-dead dates, whereas DEP has a little flexibility. They said that won't be the case this time, but that still gives you two years to get it done. So if we're all permitted and ready to go, then.
Different offer money.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a different pile.
Different federal level, state level. We have received our second trench.
Okay. So this would be another.
So I'd I'd make that motion to have the Road Commissioner review all possible grant opportunities, matching opportunities, and to ask at the next town meeting to to hold this money over.
Do we have to ask?
No, the money's in general gonna be transferred over anyways because we didn't spend it. So it'll go, I'm assuming, into the general. Is that correct, Mitch?
Yes.
Correct. So the money's already.
Money's already there.
Money's already allocated for.
It needs to reserve for that.
Yeah, it'll be in reserves. I don't, it would just go in general. I don't know if we could technically earmark it for that.
That I'd have to double check because the town meeting approved it for a specific purpose.
Right.
And if you earmark it in reserve, you're living up to the spirit and intent of their motion. If we can't get funding, then we don't spend it, go back to another town meeting or special town meeting and say, we wanna redirect that money to a different project altogether.
So by that rationale, it's actually designated money. It's not necessarily undesignated money.
That's right. It is designated.
Right. And once we and once we don't spend it, it would become undesignedated. So it's not really allocated for anything once we go to town meeting next year.
Unless we get a repeat performance.
Right. We have to re-request.
Where are we at at all with the Quicken Meeting House Bridge?
That's gotta go back. That's gotta go back to plan. It's gotta go back to ground zero.
It's been engineered at all.
Yeah, but they they didn't they didn't approve it, so it's gonna have to go back and be redone as a bridge. DOT's gonna have to get involved.
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor, so let's let's address that, and we can have discussion after that. Is there a second to the motion on the floor?
I'll second.
Now have all the discussion you want, please. Go now, it's time. No more discussion?
So Army Corps of Engineers hasn't looked at.
They have.
Quicken Meeting House.
Yes, and they're the ones that determine now it's gonna be a bridge.
Both of them have to be concrete.
Yes, one will be under a bridge, one will be over a bridge. One will become a bridge and one will stay under the threshold.
Right, it won't be.
Twenty feet is the magic number. Swamp Road will be eighteen point five feet.
Yeah, and I think that's what my my concern is as far as, for lack of better words, and I don't even know if we can do it as earmarking or something of that nature with this with this with these funds, simply because the whole job in total that we raise this money for is, well, it's been changed. It's not the same thing that we raised the money for. So I'd be hard-pressed to say, hey, we wanna continue this forward when really what we ask for is not even in existence anymore. It's a completely different project.
Suppose we can use the permitting to the point that you've gotten, but we kind of need.
Right, you know what you have to do, but that's about it.
Yeah, I think the probably the best thing for Calvin, I mean, this is just my opinion, would be to just, this money's gonna probably go into undesignedated, and then he needs to bring up this particular or another project in tandem with it like we had the last time and see if the towns vote to move X amount of dollars back undesignedated and designated for that and move forward. That's a mouthful. So any other further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you wanna amend? Did you wanna amend the motion or?
Well, I don't even I don't even know how I would amend it because, like I said, it's it's really, we're amending, we're the project's amended.
Right.
It's not the project that the money was allocated for is completely changed. You know, whether it's first, it was allocated for two projects. Now it's under one project, so it's.
Right.
For me, it's. Yeah, for me, it's a completely different animal than what it really, its original intent was for when we asked voters for the money. So that's what my issue is with it.
In your motion and seek town meeting approval, like the preparation and the town meeting itself, we should have a better handle on what we should or should not do with that money going forward. If you do nothing, then your scenario comes into play, and it's undesignedated at that point.
Yeah, yeah, by that rationale, though, wouldn't we'd have to do nothing prior to that meeting? That means we're not, and currently, right now, we're really doing nothing with this money until probably next year after we have a board, after we have a town meeting.
Yeah, we don't have town now, too.
But he has.
It's it's half dozen.
He should remain vigilant because if there's a window that opens up, remember, federal dollars go run every October to September.
Well, I I don't think necessarily vigilance runs hand in hand with this project. I think Calvin's been pretty vigilant, no matter what the process is, and if funds are available for something, whether it was this project or projects in the past or projects in the future, if he sees money available, then he'll bring it to the town, I'm sure. But the fact of the matter is, I don't, the funds that were raised for these two projects, the project's completely different project. It's not the same entity anymore.
The money's gonna go away on this.
The money's gonna go away anyways. We're not gonna utilize it this year.
But I I I would. It's gonna end up the same way either way it's worded.
Either way, it's worded, yeah. So really, I think the only question is, and I don't even know if this is a question, Mitch, I've referred to you obviously, is could could we earmark some of that money to do further designs or to have that ready? More so if, like, Calvin needed further engineering on that particular project, could he use some of that money that the town has allocated? But other than that, that's really all we could do at this point.
I agree with your recommendation. It is, in fact, the Swamp Road project. And according to the verbal advice from MMA in our own town council, that means it was one article. Even though it was split into two, it's still one article, one bottom line. And as such, your motion that's on the floor still has some life to it. And to that extent, if we need to do something else for the Swamp Road, that's where the charges would go to. And if something becomes available.
Right.
Take full advantage of it, and hopefully, your management at that time and yourselves can come to grips because you won't be able to start the project November, but it will be prepared for the following stretch of season.
Right, yeah, we have it all together. If the federal funding came through in October, say, then you could at least maybe prep something before winter or do something maybe possibly.
Yeah, like I said, other than new engineering, which I think Calvin, but I mean, you can't really do anything because.
Time isn't there.
We don't buy the material. The contractor does. So you're you're really voting on something that the voters are gonna have to vote on.
Anyways.
Yeah, that's gonna not, it's gonna be out of our hands.
Yep.
But if something does occur in the interim that need those funds need to be expended for, it's still there and it's designated for that, so.
Exactly. It's a placeholder.
Yep.
It allows us or you to move forward should something like that occur. If not, your scenario then is picked up at the March town meeting.
Okay. So we'll call the motion to vote. All those in favor? And I'm against. We'll go three one.
So I apologize. Apparently, I guess I got those two out of order. You guys, none of you guys were looking at me a little funny. Started with the second.
It's okay.
Second point.
We knew we knew where you were.
The paving brings in some more good news.
Run it.
Seems like that's all I got lately is fuel and paving and bridges. And so the paving's right now up about sixty two thousand dollars over what it was last. it was last, this spring, winter. So that basically results in about two point five miles of road getting paved instead of three miles, uh, and that's, and that, that pretty much happens every year, as liquid asphalt goes up and down, some years we get more, some we get less, but, um, so.
What are you planning on?
We have Bowie Hill.
Yep.
You know, section, uh, Bowie Hill, the section from the pit to Stackpole, Stackpole from one thirty-six up to, uh, up beyond your house on the sharp end. And we had Hunter Hill, Ada, and Patriots, so something's gotta come off of there, and obviously, it's gonna be Ada, no, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
It definitely should, and you know, in my opinion, it probably should be the ma, the, the roads that are not the thoroughfares of the town.
The ones that are in better shape, and those are in better shape.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a hundred, so what you're saying is, it's roughly a hundred and thirty-five thousand a mile, and we gotta shave off a half a mile?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
The reality of math.
Yeah, exactly.
Sort of breaks down to, I think.
So, that's what I got on the paving, um, and, you know, that's where it is right now, so, and, and Crooker said they can't even get here till August, they should've been here by now, can't get here till August, and then they said it's probably gonna be a subcontractor, because they have no payers, they have no crews, they have no, so.
Calvin, just out of curio, and I, and I don't remember the exact language, but perhaps you could, when we did that, um, we did somewhat of a, for lack of a better word, a price guarantee contract with Crooker for the next, I thought there was a, three years, are we still in that?
This is that second.
Right, so with that said, there was a specific max escalator, was there not?
An escalator, the escalator clause is a formula that, um, is built into.
Okay, it wasn't a straight-up two percent, it was based off current.
It's the cost of liquid asphalt that's, uh, uh, the market dictates on a weekly basis that changes, fluctuates, and so, their unit price stays the same, the cost to put it down, but the liquid asphalt, uh, if that goes up, that seventy dollar a ton then becomes whatever the mathematical formula is.
I gotcha. So the cost of labor and the cost of.
Everything else.
Equipment is, it's the cost of goods escalated, for lack of better words, the.
The liquid asphalt, that makes the asphalt.
The liquid asphalt.
They're eating everything, they're, they're paying their truckers all twelve dollars an hour more an hour to haul the asphalt, they're paying their employees more, they're paying diesel, they're, they're paying all the way around, and they're eating that, but they can't eat the liquid asphalt, which is what all the towns do, so. Even the D O T signs on with that.
Nope, nope, that's, no, that's perfectly reasonable, I, I get it, I just wanted, I just wanted a refresher on what exactly that escalator was, thank you.
But as they, as they told me, they have no, they have no workers, they, they're down to one crew, and they said, in fact, when they do see us in August, it's gonna be a subcontractor.
Life in America, buddy.
It's gonna be a little subcontracting company that shows up, and that's, that's, that's all they got, so, we'll have to keep an eye on them and.
Do you think you will be able to, just out of curiosity, and I don't wanna belabor this, but do you think you will be able to get the two point six miles in, or do you think that's even gonna be a struggle?
Well, I mean, uh, between now and August first, and I mean, unless liquid asphalt keeps climbing, and it, that's, that, that's where we should be.
No, I, I, I'm not talking necessarily from a price standpoint, I apologize for not going, I, I'm saying from, just from a, a workload perspective on Crooker's end, are we still gonna be able to get at least two point six miles of the three that we anticipated?
They have a contract, they guarantee it, and they'll, they'll get it done, they said they'll send a sub in to do it, but they're gonna get it done.
Okay.
They've never let me down yet, they've, they've made me have a few nail biters and.
I get it, but nobody's ever, these are unprecedented times, I, I couldn't blame them if they did let you down, to be honest with them.
They haven't yet, so.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah, working on the heating and cooling, uh, met with a contractor today, here in the fire station, met with one yesterday, and, uh, we have, uh, so I think that's, I think we've got them all now.
And, and we followed your suggestion of getting quotes, and in the process, we, uh, wanted to make it very clear to the contractors that they must come with an electrical supplement as an example, we need a whole new entry into the fire station to be able to do the work they want to do, only because they don't have inadequate supply. The wiring beyond the box, not an issue, it's the entry.
The pail itself.
You're at a loss.
So, so we're still waiting for those, and we have a July one deadline that we've put out there, and because Calvin has been beating the bushes, we do have interest, and we're hoping that we can get a party to identify with you as the lowest responsible quota, and move forward with all of this, but we have to also recognize how that's gonna be paid for, and that's a whole nother discussion, because I believe ARPA was part and parcel of some of that payment.
So were you gonna talk about that on, in your report, then?
Just did.
But you're gonna need the. That's gonna go to town meeting, a special town.
Town meeting, yeah. All of the ARPA-related funds have to have town meeting approval, and we need to be able to say, project A, project B, project C, project D, da, 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 now, in front of you, I'll jump a little bit, but I thank you for reminding me, uh, one of the bullets that just came out about eligibility, and it deals with the I T component, and then it has ineligible projects, and it keeps reminding us, and every time I see one of these notices coming through, they become looser and looser, and I think, I figure by twenty, twenty-four election, it's, it's gonna say, just tell us you did the project.
Right.
But, I mean.
Fit a, a bridge project underneath ARPA.
Yeah.
You didn't have been, yeah, you would've had, with the second trench, you do have money.
Well, that's what D E P told me, he said, you can use your ARPA funds to make their ARPA funds, he said, that is approved, so if you have any available, you don't spend.
So, you know, we wanna keep it something.
That was kidding.
And if you, and you don't wanna go to multiple special town meetings, you wanna get it all done once, and be done with it.
Complaining about COVID.
But we are sitting on that four hundred and forty thousand dollars right now, and that's helping our cash flow, which postponed borrowing a tan for another week or two.
So, I guess my question, Mitch, was, so if the deadlines you put in the R Q, is, you want it done by August first?
We can be flexible on the August first completion, if that's what it's gonna take to get a quote, but it should be done before it snows.
Yeah.
I mean, this building gets very worn very quickly, and I'm concerned about the staff, and the alternative is, if we extend that, I may very well get, uh, pedestal fans and things to allow for the cooling to occur. This side cools down, but it doesn't get the cold over to that side, so, and if necessary, shorts will be the dress of the day.
This side cools down?
Yeah, I was gonna say. Oh, I turned it off, that's the other problem.
So he could get the new egg, and then, no, I just, so.
It's my dead, it's, it's my desert blood, if it's not a hundred, I'm not hot yet.
So, yeah, 'cause I, I know that some of the contractors have been saying, all of them have been saying, that, uh, heat pumps are not available, so there's quite a lead time to get one.
If we can lock them in, I think that's the first important step.
They said this never happened before, they said normally, they could, uh, they said normally, you could order a heat pump, they price it today and put it in tomorrow, but now they.
Doesn't surprise me.
I don't know if it's just they're all allocated, I have a tenant that's in the heat pump business, and they got a building full of them over, uh, Brunswick.
The ones who are telling me they can't get are Mitsubishi's, that's pretty much.
Yeah, the Mitsubishi's are tough to get, but like the Dakins and the new, um, Samson's.
They're saying you're gonna have to go to Samson's.
Yeah, the Samson's are pretty readily available, depending on what size you want.
Is the town meeting already in motion to, 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 the date, to get the funds to pay for the project, or, are those two?
That's a question that we have to talk later on, is to, when is the select board wanting to do the town meeting? We discussed this two weeks ago, and I, I, you're absolutely right for pushing it, because having a town meeting in August doesn't really help us a whole lot, we need to, to move ahead and let the public know, and quite frankly, we're not the only town that's facing that issue, and if fifty people show up, or five hundred people, it's the will of the people to, and the outcome, but we've gotta get permission to use those funds, and that comes from a town meeting.
Okay, we can, we can discuss that.
Okay, well, that's all I got.
Thank you, Calvin.
Calvin, thanks for the reminder.
Thank you. Moving right along, we're gonna go to the town managers' report.
All right, Devin? Uh, we have been trying to update and get information, and Devin's gonna be reviewing this, and there is a small, but very precise, uh, memo to you that Devin will go through, and I have to tell you, as of today, my hard drive is on its last leg, it makes more noise than tombs, and, um, so we've ordered an external hard drive, cheap money, and next week, we hope to have, uh, transfer into it, just in case that one goes, but we're talking, as Devin will point out, a movement forward, and he's got the explanation, I don't wanna steal his thunder, he's done a lot of work on this that helps identify what your costs are going to be, then we can talk, and this is part and parcel of my thinking, because of the ARPA funds, and that's a town meeting approval issue as well. Oh, yours, sir.
Okay, um, so the first two pages that you have for me, uh, is stuff you've seen before, just sort of cleaned up and put in other ways to look at, um, the last two pages, um, are the quote from B E K about the air fiber system, so, it will be a one-time charge of a little over three grand to get that installed, but it has the prerequisite of us having faster internet as well.
Which makes it eligible for ARPA.
Yeah. So on the second page of my packet, towards the bottom, I have a breakdown, uh, our current yearly costs for internet and phone is eight thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty cents. The option one that you see is doing the air fiber system, so that will get us a sort of large one-time cost, but a significantly less yearly cost, as opposed to us having internet from Comcast installed at Eureka.
Separately, yeah.
And that, I don't think would be a good idea anyway, because the space will not be used enough to have dedicated internet, makes sense. So, with the air fiber system, the only real requirements that we're gonna face, we need to have a clear line of sight from this building to Eureka, so we're gonna have to cut some trees, we'll try to find, you know, the shortest possible distance, so we don't have to cut, you know, all the trees down, um, but other than that, B E K will do the installation for us, um, that's included in that three grand charge, um, the full breakdown of pretty much everything is listed, if you needed to look at specifics.
I'd say Calvin's crew would be doing the tree cutting.
And how, how much tree cutting would be involved? You know, I'm trying to picture this, and I can't picture it.
How, how wide would this have to be, to be functional, six feet, eight feet, ten feet, twelve?
Pro, it's, as far as I'm aware, it's a pretty narrow beam, so it wouldn't be too much, um, I would say probably six feet clearance is.
You still want the branches flapping around in that.
The, if, the extreme weather conditions causing the effect, that would cause the effect that the Eureka Center not here, right?
Right. Um, and from all the research I've done on it, it literally will take very intense weather for it to see.
The town's not open type weather.
Right, yeah.
Right. So, and so it's, it would save us, in a year and a half, we'd be, we'd be saving that thirty-one hundred bucks anyway, so.
And one of the things that I haven't shared with Devin is, there are times when you move forward with a project like this, if it's approved, you also ask for the first year operational cost to be built into the payment, which would be allowable, again, under ARPA, so you pay off one year in advance, and they guarantee, warranty the whole nine yards, and that may give you a little saving grace for a year on top of that, as opposed to raising taxes to just pay the, the first year.
So.
We can be creative.
I'd like that you put the pros and cons here, and I, I answered all my questions, so, it seems.
Have you, uh, have you looked at Red Zone, while it's, uh?
No, I've not.
I don't know if that would have the speeds, but, you know, the only thing I would suggest, and I, I think this looks great, is, I would probably, before we make an ultimate decision, is just double-check with Calvin on the trees, there's a lot of times in the town where, um, some of these trees, it's not appropriate for our guys to cut down, and we've had to sub that out, so if that's the case, and we do have to sub it out, and there are gonna be an added cost of three, four, I mean, I never know what trees, they can cost, I don't know, I don't know if you guys ever had a tree cut down, but they get expensive, um, so I would just double-check to make sure what we have to cut, if Calvin's guys are capable of doing that, or do we need to get another bid to do that?
And the other thing I was thinking is, like, if you could just limb them up, leave them, and go underneath, is the other option, too.
Make a canopy?
Yeah, then you don't, uh, then you won't be maybe taking cold trees, and only, if you're able to pull that out, 'cause the building, this is kinda low building, so you go twenty feet up and.
Going again, and that might, that might require an abra slash bucket truck, where our guys would necessarily.
On your point, though, yeah, no, you're absolutely right, I don't know how.
And how long is something like that gonna take? I mean, can we figure that out by our next meet, uh, 'cause, I mean, you've already said, you wanna try to do as much as we can in one meeting, and it sounds like, you know, the H VAC stuff has to get done quickly, where.
I was about to suggest conditional approval on the part of the board, subject to not having to go out to, uh, for tree limbing of any kind, doing it in-house, and, uh, anything that we haven't exposed to you as a, as a cost, that would allow us to begin moving that project along. If however Calvin says we can't do any of that, it's too dangerous, then, then we get a quote and bring it back to you, that would be the conditional approval, otherwise.
I thought he did, yeah.
He said, he's, he'd probably ride, ride the bull.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he'd, he'd do, he'd do it no matter what.
Yeah, but I, I think that condition placed on a motion would get it off your agenda, we would report the progress only from the standpoint that we're moving forward with it, and we get all these things squared away, I, my old ears are getting tired of this phone system that I can't hear half the time in the breakup.
Yeah, and I, I do wanna stress the importance of our phone and internet system, even, not even talking about Eureka, but what we already have is failing, and it gets worse day by day, week by week.
Yeah, so.
What was the recommendation of you guys, was it option one or option two?
I recommend option one, because that is cheaper in the long run, um, and the only real difference is that option two is just getting Comcast to install new service at Eureka, it includes the same costs of, uh, internet and phones for everything else.
Normally, I would be opposed to a conditional motion like that, but I think in these circumstances, if things are as bad as you're saying, I think it would be appropriate, so I would, I would make that motion that we conditionally approve option number one, the ubiquity?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, air fiber system, um, as outlined in, in this memo, um, conditional on, uh, whether or not there are other costs that need to be expended to complete the project.
A second.
Any discussion?
Uh, that was you?
Yeah, yes, thank you, sir.
Hearing no discussion, let's go to a vote, all those in favor? Four, zero.
Thank you, nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing all the research, that's awesome.
Want somebody hanging up on the phone, if anyone wants?
That's the most important thing.
Yeah, I know, everybody would go wild.
I guess you know what we didn't discuss, that doesn't have any effect on our, our other contracts with, with Comcast or anything, right?
Not that I'm aware of, and you asked me to, uh, I might as well report it, Comcast has notified us it's now time to renew the franchise, and no, M M A does not have a lead position in negotiating on behalf of towns, and to their knowledge, there isn't even a consortium of towns put together that go and negotiate with Comcast, so, whether it starts while I'm here. So whether it starts while I'm here, or whether it starts with the new manager once hired, you're gonna face a negotiation process that is very narrow in scope. And we get roughly forty-four thousand dollars of franchise fee for that negotiations. And I think that ought to have escalators and other strategies attached to it, which because of negotiation should be in executive session. But I wanted to report that back to you as well.
There's a subcontractor riding around, running lines.
Yes.
Is that phone or is it called cable?
It's the lowest one, and they believe it's phone.
I thought it was phone.
Usually cable is the more shiny as opposed to flexible.
Yeah.
And so I, I'm glad to see that's happening, because I've noticed phone interruptions and stuff.
Should be a good option. If they're gonna run something as broadband, right? They can run broadband on that.
They can, yeah. If they run the right stuff, we can.
Okay. So is that a discussion you wanna have tonight? About the negotiations?
I don't think you need to have it tonight. I think you should give some thought now as to what you wanna get out of the negotiations. Put a laundry list together in executive session, and I will make contact with Comcast. They've ordered, Jay Summers has made contact with me, and chances are I'll, I will pull together something. What I'd appreciate, however, is that one or two of you, therefore there's not a quorum, sit with me for negoti- with negotiations going forward, someone who'd be available daytime for that purpose. So get some thought to that as well.
The contract that you sent us, that's our existing contract, correct?
Yes, sir. Most of it is boilerplate.
And you're saying it's gonna change?
They always do. The only thing I would, if, if you know any, um, I know you have a, you know, a lengthy network of connections, if you know anybody who has recently maybe have gone through that and maybe could provide us with do's and don'ts, for lack of better words, of, because I don't, none of us, this has never happened in my tenure on this board, so I, I don't even know what to begin to ask for or not to ask for.
Ten-year contract, isn't it?
I, I could ask somebody, but it was almost forty years ago when they did it, so.
That's the problem. Okay.
Which we're still with you.
I know, I'm just writing the note.
No problem.
The, the other thing I can do is I wanna take a closer look at the contract and make recommendations to you in written form that can carry through, or at least be the starting point for your discussions. I know that in my negotiations, while I was in Bridgeton, we were getting ready to deal with Warner, Time Warner Cable at the time. And I have negotiated with Time Warner Cable in other communities. To me, it was a dollar and cents issue, that's what it boiled down to.
Yeah.
And an access channel or something that, but for the most part, neither party walked away with all they wanted, and that means it was a good negotiation.
Yeah.
Sure.
Are you able to share the current contract? Do we have that already?
He, the, the guy from Time Warner emailed it at the end of last week, I think.
Okay, alright.
I think he emailed it to us individually.
I remember that now.
Yeah, alright.
I have your address, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Should be, I'll double-check it.
If you need another copy.
No, I will, I'll check it right now, so I'll let you know.
We briefly talked while Calvin was here about the advertisements, HVAC. And it's a request for quotes, which is slightly different than a request for proposals and going through a formal bid process, trying to expedite this, and rely upon the standards in the industry for cubic feet that are being heating or cooling, and electrical requirements, things of that nature. Calvin has been doing a good job in contacting different people. I, I don't know if the gentleman in the audience is part of that interest group, or if it's something else. Okay. But we're continually waiting for those quotes, and come July one, we'll see what we have in hand, and then I'll report it to you at your July twelfth meeting, I believe it is.
Fair enough.
We have a part-time counter clerk on hand. We lucked out.
Great.
Still working. She survived Janet, and she survived Jessica.
Passed the test.
She actually very well versed in areas of IT with her master's degree.
Right.
She's got the patience for customers, and it's, they're working as a team. And that has immediately changed the dynamics of the office.
Sure.
So that the counters being taken care of by this person and Jessica, while Janet, who is now getting caught up on different things, including how to set the tax rate and all the other things that go with that.
That's great.
It's proving to be a relief valve, and we will back her off on ours, but right now, we're at very intense points. Her name is Cindy, and she's a pleasant person to work with, like the other two, and ultimately, you now have a staff that you can point your finger to that is trying to give customer service. The goal is ultimately to open up at some point on Wednesdays for a while as well.
You must have some vacations coming up, too.
It'll probably be the fall, and then you'll have to make that decision with your manager at that time.
But that's great news.
Right. We received word indirectly. Calvin went out to look at it, and then a miracle happened, and there was a repair to the old city, or the old town hall and Union Church. And at the same time, we're beginning to receive unofficial quotes, if you will, for lack of a better term, on replacing the whole roofing str- not the structure, but the sheathing itself. And that which came in, I won't announce who it's from or its pricing, but we are waiting to get other responses as well. As an outsider, I think my obligation to you is to ask the following questions. Not that you have to answer them tonight, but these are the questions that I would be asking of any elected body who are dealing with an old building. Is your intention to get a return on your investment, and if so, what is that return that you're expecting? What are the potential uses in the future of that building? Or will it be a monument like a cemetery stone for the rest of your life, hanging around your neck and sucking the lifeblood of money out of your treasury? I have no connection to it, but I see other towns are getting rid of some of their smaller buildings, the cost of maintaining them with no return use to the benefit other than visual and historical value. And I can't judge the historical value of that, but I think these are questions that policymakers have to.
It probably is.
For this town. This town is probably the highest, as far as the historical value.
We knocked this one down for you, though.
And, and, and I'm raising the question because if I foul someone, they can tell me, leave town, and I will. But I have to tell you that those are options that policymakers have to deal with on an ongoing basis. You know, you've already built some of the, rebuilt some of the foundations, from what I understand. But what is its ultimate use, other than a symbol of the starting of your town in a more formal government basis?
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, and I appreciate you posing the question. And I, I think what we established there was when we get situated in the future with, um, a seated town manager, et cetera, a committee would be formed on these buildings, whether how to address them, how to maintain them, how to repair them, et cetera, moving forward. I think it's a very legitimate question. It's not, you know, the town, as recently as a few years ago, actually, one of the churches, we actually did, um, transfer to a, um, nonprofit, a nonprofit entity that took over and maintains, and currently maintains that building. So I, I mean, it's not out of the realm, but I do think it's a very important question to ask going into the future.
I, I'm challenging the policymakers, because I think they, public needs to hear from you, your diligence on return on investment, which is their harder tax dollars. With that said, I am pleased to inform you that the IRS has changed its mileage rate for reimbursement. It's a major change in two reasons. One, it's mid-year. It starts this Friday, July one. Two, it went from point five eight five to point six two five. And that may sound very little, but if you get twenty miles to the gallon, and you add that extra five cents or four cents, it does have an impact on what it costs to put gas in the tank. The problem is, the IRS mileage also takes into account depreciation, wear and tear, and the other things, so that it's a short-term remedy, and where any community has individuals using their personal vehicle for the purposes of conducting town business, stop-and-go traffic doesn't get you the most efficient mileage. But at this point, we had one employee who raised the question, and I said, in all likelihood, the policy is we follow the IRS, and that's your reimbursement, and then I did the math for him. So I just wanna keep you informed that that's out there.
No, we appreciate it. So by, um, by having that, are, are we meeting the needs of the employee with this new adjustment?
Pandora's box comes to mind.
Yeah. We just wanna be fair, and we wanna be, and we wanna be, you know.
I have to look at how many employees are impacted.
Okay.
And my preliminary is that there's one. Actually, there's two, because someone goes to the post office and up to the other location, and they're getting that. But again, depending on the mileage they get, eighteen, twenty, you know, we can do the math and determine that if they're getting twelve and thirteen dollars, that's more than enough for the.
For the trip.
For the funeral.
Trip, then some. So I, I would offer to you, follow the IRS for now. I'd like to be able to say it to one, but my experience tells me, as soon as you make a move to do something different for one, there's a domino effect in the organization.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the only other thing you could do is you could do actual, and that's a bit harder, but quite honestly, actual doesn't get the person the money that the IRS is actually paying them. We've done that. I've done that routine in both directions, and I always make out with the fifty-eight cents better than I do with the, with, you know, giving them receipts.
And the other issue is, if you exceed the IRS, does that count as income? Does that impact their tax and our employer tax that goes with it? So for a host of different reasons.
Yeah, I think we're kinda stuck with.
Yeah, that would, I agree. Okay.
That was FYI. I have, um, I'm reaching out to Bernstein Sure, our bond attorney. They were the ones who've been involved with you on your last TANs, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one. And I'm putting together the package so that we can hopefully have attorney's opinion with the bond. We're gonna, we're going to contact also the banks we deal with and see what their terms are. And I'm, I've already done a cash flow that will take us through probably to December thirtieth of this calendar year. Big things that you need to keep in mind in the cash flow is that once a month, we pay out now four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to the school district. It was four fifty-five before July one, and now it's at a higher rate. And in the course of the four and five weeks of payables and payroll, payroll is normally twelve to eighteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand when we do EMS. And so all things considered, you're six to seven hundred thousand dollars of expenses a month. And if we're sitting on one point five million right now in the bank in hard cash, and that includes all cash, not necessarily categorized for just one use, we can replenish those accounts on paper in theory. You, you can do the math very quickly that you're sitting on two, maybe two and a, at best, two months' worth. And we should be getting the TAN out a lot sooner, and that ties us into getting out our tax bills a lot sooner. Because during the last fiscal year, your months, the latter part, the two weeks in July and the month of August, you brought in over one million five hundred dollars in certain days of the week throughout each of those weeks in the month. And that makes all the difference in the world, because come September one, we'll have already paid six hundred thousand, six hundred, four hundred dollars to the county for the county tax rate. That has to be paid out. And by December thirtieth, you gotta pay back the TAN, plus interest. And I figured the TAN interest would be somewhere, best guess, thirty-nine to forty-four thousand dollars for that period of time, depending on the interest rate. And it's a one-point-five-million-dollar TAN. I say up to, because we only draw it down as needed. So that's informational. I wanna make sure that you're comfortable with that, and if there's any questions, please ask me. I'll try to get the information if I haven't given it to you tonight, but I believe you should authorize the TAN going forward. And here's where my memory is failing me. Did we do this at the last meeting?
We discussed it. I don't think we authorized the TAN.
So I need to have authorization.
So you asked if we're comfortable. Is there another alternative?
No, but, yeah, no.
Right. That, that's what I thought, but, I mean.
I think Kevin touched on this last. It, it, this is somewhat of a common practice in municipal government. We've done this numerous times in the past. It's not an atypical procedure by any, by any, by any imagination here. It's, it's, it's something standard. It's kind of an SOP, especially with us, where we don't really necessarily fall in a fiscal tax year. We, you know, that's really what the issue is at hand. It's, we don't have fiscal tax year. We're allocating money in January and collecting taxes in August, so.
I, I only asked because you used the word, the word comfortable. Making, making me think there were other alternatives I wasn't aware of.
And come January one, you need at least four-point-five to five million dollars in the coffers from collections from the previous year. Fiscal year is the answer to that. You'll still borrow, but for a lots shorter period of time.
Yeah. Fiscal year and what a biannual tax bill, right?
I'm a proponent of both. It allows Memmy and Peppy to pay the smaller amount, or the amount in half each time. Some prefer paying it all at once, but they never do.
Right.
Taxpayers will tell you, oh, I'll be glad to, how come you're charging us twice? No, you get one tax bill, two tabs. You pay one by this date and one by this date. And if you wanna talk about transitioning to a fiscal year, I'll be glad to help you out. There are really two options, a six-month fiscal year, and then you go to a twelve-month fiscal year after that.
Yeah, it's been on, it's been on the floor, for lack of better words, in terms of this establishment many times. It's just with so many changes that we've done over the last few years, it just hasn't been able to be thoroughly discussed.
It's the business of local government. It's not just government anymore. It's a business, and you've gotta look at the best options for yourselves and your taxpayers.
Sure. So with that said, we'll entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to apply and receive a TAN through the local municipal bank of its choice by also using Bernstein and Sure as their bond attorney.
One second.
Josh.
Second.
Any discussion?
Painful as it is. Well, we've done it. Just one year. Did we even use it last year? I'm trying to think.
Briefly, we, we had. I think there was one year that you're right. We did not use it, but there was something in play there. I think the reason why we didn't use it is because we had, don't, and I could be way off on this, so I probably shouldn't even say it, but I think we had money in reserves because we were waiting on projects that we had money to fund, for example.
Cash flow.
We had cash flow from maybe road projects, things like that, so.
To get through, yeah.
Okay, without hearing any further discussion, um, let's have the vote. All those in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I simply am recommending to you, it's a style issue. After working with you now for these last several months, and that started in March, it goes too quickly sometimes. There are different ways of setting up agendas. I looked at your format and I said, stick with what they generally have. But I have provided for you perhaps a slightly more detailed agenda than you may want to get into, but I'd recommend you considering it. If you go down quickly, you'll identify some of the very things that you've been doing now. But I would recommend we move forward and always claim these as major categories so that when we're taking notes or referring back to the date, it'd be four dash whatever in the manager's report, five dash A, B, C, or D in the old business report or so on. It's just a little bit more formal, but it's great for being able to retrieve information at the same time. If you really want to make a major change, then I'd go back to doing some further research because there are some very intricate agendas that are out there. But I, this one.
So when you mean old business, you're not going to like continuing business?
Something from the previous, once it comes up, it's no longer new business. It goes to an old business. And you can see how many times it shows up. And if you want to get detailed, we could put on it
Right.
And now you know the year, date, and the month of the meeting when that happens. And how many times does it keep coming back? And then you monitor yourself saying, this has been here for the last six months. Why haven't we done anything? And then you look at the manager and you give a kick and you say, okay, get moving. But it's different. What level do you want is really up to you. I'm just merely suggesting that this is a way to do it, one way to do it.
I like that way personally, but it makes no difference to me.
I'm not rushing into it because I'm not going to be your manager forever. And you have to be comfortable with your procedures.
Yeah, right. That's what we did. Yeah.
That's what they use at the county commission and that's what they've used.
Right.
We do it in the Graywater District as a trustee. And you'll see something come up and there's certain things right away. Why are we still doing that? Because we never finish the conversation. Shame on me, not on anybody else.
So the roof on the old town hall will come up as old business next time.
That is correct. And it keeps reoccurring itself until you get a decision made or you say, take it off. We're not dealing with it any further, which is a decision.
Thinking about it that way, I kind of like, I like that idea. I hadn't thought about it.
But I think it should be a decision of five.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, this is very hard without the chair currently here. I think, I think he presides. Yeah, he should really.
And I would change the word old to continuing.
Yeah, I just, I would agree with Mitch that I think this would need the consent of five before moving forward. I mean, with that said, I mean, this notice of public hearing, the way that it's formatted here, you know, as far as it's been written this way, it has been placed in different orders and so forth. Obviously, it's changed with town manager report because, you know, changes happen. So it's not an atypical request. I just would feel more comfortable with the blessing of the chairman rather than, you know, five of us making that decision before moving forward. I think it's a great idea, though.
Yeah, it's for your discussion.
All of my brain to work, brother.
I like it from the historical aspect of it. If you do have to find something, it's a lot easier that way for people, for people in the, in the future, rather than just us. We may remember, but sometimes these are historical records.
Exactly.
So. Exactly. Anything else, Mr. Town Manager?
For the moment, that takes care of number four, sir.
Okay, thank you. With that said, I'd like to open the floor up to public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comment? And as a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per person.
Three minutes? That's all I got?
Come on up, Keith. Two and a half now.
Just in case you don't know, Keith Russell, 284 Swanford. I don't come here as a committee member or head of chair or nothing like that. I come here as the flag guy.
Yes.
I put the flags up from the store down to the Anvits Hall and up to the school every year. As you all know, that started, I don't know, 15 or 20 years ago through the fire department and the Memorial Day Parade Committee. Started out, I think, with 15 or 20 flags. At one point, we were up to around 50 flags. When the chief, St. Michelle, got done as the chief, he kind of handed that responsibility to me as the deputy chief. And I kind of took it on as a personal responsibility of my own. And I've been putting the flags up for, I don't know, eight or nine years now and taking them down every year. And typically, I go through the Memorial Day Committee. They have always been responsible for maintaining the flags. The last few years with COVID and all, that kind of has fallen through the cracks. And this year, there really wasn't a committee. Joe Howe kind of tried to get it going, but nothing happened. And I personally love the looks of the flags. I drive all over the state. They're in, I don't know how many towns out of the whole state, but they're everywhere. And usually they're every pole for, through what I would call Main Street section. I talked to Todd about it a couple of weeks ago and he said, get a price. So I did. All this is, is just a simple price from the sign store up in Auburn. I personally think that we should, would like to see a flag on every pole from the Davis Road to the Anvits Hall, full flags down New Ulbruck Road and then up to the school entrance on Hollow Road, at least, at a minimum. And that encompasses 66 poles. We currently have 26 flags. One of them fell down recently up by the store. I picked that up. Like I said, over the last few years, we've lost and deteriorated a bunch of flags. This proposal of 50 flags gets us back to about 70-ish working flags. So we'd have a five-flag leeway. And currently, out of the 26 flags that I do have, about half of them are fairly faded. And etiquette-wise, they probably should be replaced. So this would get us probably into a 10-year cycle where we'd have enough flags to do what I'm looking at. And then going forward, you know, I would anticipate maybe 10 flags every couple, two or three years. That's what, that would be my anticipation. She did treat us fairly well on this price. She gave us a 15% discount. She had this stuff in stock, so she didn't have to order anything. So this is the price for now, you know? If, if it goes into next spring, we have to go past town meeting to get the money. I don't know what's in the Memorial Day Fund. I have nothing to do with that. I've never had anything to do with that. But I know there's been money set aside for that. Just my little thing that I like to do.
No, I think it's great. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks really nice. Sorry.
Mitch, I don't, I don't know, and you know, without Kevin here, Kevin's probably the only one that might know that, if, if in fact the memorial fund even still exists or if that got merged with everything else.
I think you're right. I first heard about it when you emailed me the information, but I have not had a chance to get into the details. But I bet you Kevin does have that information.
So.
You can keep that. How long is this, does this go for? She didn't tell me specifically, but I would be surprised that it's no more than 30 days. I mean, I'm in the business of retail and we don't hold a quote of more than 30 days for anything right now.
You can't. No, you know, my, my only thing is, I would vote for this in a heartbeat, first and foremost. I think everybody knows me and knows that, but I just, that's why I was deferring to Mitch, like, I'm all on board. How do we pay for it? That's the only question I have.
I've been asking the question randomly for a couple of years, but nobody's really in charge of it, I guess.
Right.
That's why I went to Todd.
I don't think we can go that route. Although, I don't think that's a bad.
So Mitch, let's, let's say hypothetically the board was in favor of doing this. How do we?
We just asked you to find the money.
How do we find the money? What coffee can you get out back, Mitch?
I think the first thing I would do is sit down with Janet and take a look at our undesignated fund balance. I would look at anything related to public works that might have a few dollars. But 3,000 is, right now with everything else that you have faced with energy costs and the like, I'm not so sure this qualifies, even though it's patriotic. I don't know if it qualifies for ARPA. That, you know, we keep throwing. But I would do that too because it's very patriotic.
It is. That's what, that's what went through.
It's American.
Yeah, yeah.
The way we do things.
But the other thing would be is to look at if we memorial committee fund.
Well, see, that's just it. A lot of these funds got.
Go away, right.
Well, they didn't go away. I think we, we actually merged them all into one. So I don't know exactly. I don't think there's specific funds allocated. I'm not saying across the board, but in certain, in certain things like memorial fund and maybe, I don't know, there was a park and rec fund or, for lack of better words, a lot of that stuff got lumped into a general fund.
When did that occur?
I'd want to go two, three, three, three years, maybe.
Legal given opinion as to the merging of all of those funds? I'm curious.
I'd have to defer to Kevin on that. Kevin and Ruth handled that. We elected, we, we went that way as a board, but how that all merged and the legalities of it, I would defer to Kevin. I couldn't speak on that.
First thing that popped into my mind is if you're a trustee of a trust, and this is not a trust, you have obligations, even if it's a dissolution of the trust. And each of those contributing entities may have had conditions for which donations were made to them. And as long as those conditions are not violated, even when you amalgamate them into one larger, then you probably have the ability to try to convince them to allow that to be paid for. But it goes back to the actions that took place for them all together.
I think in 2019 was the last actual purchase that Joe Howe made. I think he bought eight flags and 10 brackets, which was right in the area of $500. And I think that's what he told me he got allotted for that fund.
It makes it sound like the interest accrual only.
It, it transpired, I want to say that whole thing transpired right around when, like, for example, when, take the fire department, for example, when they would be under budget, that would go back into the fire capital budget, for say. And then I think later on, it started going into the general rather than a specific fund. So Kevin, Kevin, I guarantee you could speak tooth and nail if he was here on it. I just don't have the right answer on how to pay for it. I'm all for it. I think it's fantastic. I think the town should be doing this every year. I just, just tell me how to pay for it and we'll make it happen.
I, I swallow a little bit after just having that conversation about the TAN. But I, but I agree that if you're going to spend money, this is something worth spending on. But I agree, if we can find it, and so I don't know if we should table this or if we can ask Mitch to, to work with Kevin to.
Yeah, I think we could vote to approve it, possibly contingent upon Mitch finding the right way to allocate the funds to it. Contingent upon Mitch being able to allocate funds to it, something of that nature. And then once he confirms with Kevin or, and or, you know, the accountants, et cetera, that be, then so be it. And then that way, we don't have to wait for another meeting. He can call up Mr. Russell and, and run from there. Does that sound appropriate, Mitch, or is that?
Yeah, there are two aspects that just, I'm sorry, just came into my mind. I agree with everything you said, Mr. Chairman. I'm just wondering if there's also the possibility of private sponsorships. The poles near a business or something like that, would you like to, and then I don't know who would do the legwork, but that's one option.
I know for a fact that there are a couple businesses in town that were, that have talked about that. But it would be one of those things where I'm not going to be the first guy to do it, type of a thing. Know for a fact. I've talked to a lot of people about flags and everybody wants to see it, but nobody's bucked up.
Okay. And that would take so much time.
That's right.
It would, the future might be a great thing to even have more flags.
Why don't, why don't we go this way? Why don't, um, why don't, why don't we table it? I mean, if, if it's, if the funds are available for, say, this might not even need board's approval. I'm sure it does because it's, because of the amount, but if the funds are available, let's say there is a parade fund or something that would be applicable to this or Memorial Day Fund, we can go that way. In the meantime, maybe Mr. Russell, and I don't mind helping out on this, we can get together and we can talk to a few businesses and maybe we can raise a good portion of the money privately and then maybe the town could supplement the rest.
Public-private partnership.
Correct.
Okay, then would you frame that as a conditional approval subject to all the elements that you've raised?
Or do you want, I, I think if we're adding in multiple steps, I'd prefer to table it. To be, we're putting a condition on, and it could.
I think we, I think we should, I think we can table it till the next time. And I mean, 14 days is what this is. And I'm sure when we meet again, if we're at day, if we're at day 15 and he has approval, I'm sure they'll say, well, okay, you might went up 3%. But all the stuff's in stock, so they don't have to buy anything for us. So it's just a little bit of inventory. And in the meantime, maybe Mr. Russell can, for lack of better words, commandeer a few of the businesses around here to contribute some. And I wouldn't even be surprised. I mean, this is the type of thing that, I mean, you could ask a dollar from everybody in town and I'm pretty sure everybody would pitch in on this one. I don't think this is a hard one to sell to people.
Are you suggesting that someone motion that we table this till July 12?
I would make a motion to table this till July 12.
A second.
Any discussion?
Looks like Todd's going to write a check right now.
I would.
I don't think there's going to be too many. I think there'll be plenty of people that can get a good portion of this.
Yeah.
If we're going to do that, it's a private, if it's a private thing, we'll just put the money together and give to you.
No, I think, I think, you know, for example, we can work on that in the next two weeks. And let's say we're able to raise, for lack of better words, just a blanket number, half of the money and then the town only has to come up with 1,500 bucks. I'm sure we can find something like that somewhere to make this right. I mean, it's, it's the right thing to do for the town. It's the right thing to do for the community. It's.
It formalizes your Main Street.
Absolutely.
It does.
Yeah.
Without adding, without adding the expensive sidewalks.
Talk to Calvin about that.
No, that's what I said, without adding the expensive sidewalks.
So you've got a motion on the floor to table this subject.
Hearing, no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion passed.
It'll be on the 12th.
Thank you.
Should I plan on coming back this fall?
Can't hurt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Thanks, Keith. Appreciate it.
What's Keith's last name?
Russell.
Nice gentleman.
Good guy.
All right.
All right, moving on down, we are on article number eight. We have a BY, I guess we'll call it as it is, a BYOB for July 15th for 2022 for a wedding shower. We have an applicant.
Yes, we do.
I didn't see that in the package, Mitch. Was that in there?
We also have oaths of office that have to be done tonight, too. I thought I put, here it is right here, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So we have a BYOB for a wedding shower at the residence of 45 Stackpole Road in Durham. Again, that is for the 15th of July. Again, this is not, this is just an event. We're not granting a liquor license or anything of that nature. This is just someone doing the appropriate thing when they have a large party and actually doing what is required by the Bureau of Alcohol and Beverage Department of the State of Maine. This is not anything atypical. This is something that is just a routine permit that we've seen many times in the past.
I would suggest that if you agree, put it as a formal motion. And then at the end of the meeting tonight with all of your executions, you'll sign that as well.
So I'd make a motion to authorize a BYOB permit for 45 Stackpole Road, Durham, Maine for Ms. Carrie Washburn on July 15th. for Ms. Carrie Washburn on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, for a wedding shower. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? For.
Did we skip over number six?
Those are simply the results?
Oh, the, uh, yeah, because of the, what's it called? Yeah, we'll go back to that one right, right now. We skipped to actually. For the tax, for the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll go back to that right now. My fault.
He just wanted to get out early, that's all.
Do we ever? If you guys wanna sign that, we can go over there. Um, back to the agenda. Article seven, a warrant for assessment of tax for regional school unit number five, RSU five.
I should've put the word results in.
No, the tax thing got me between the two of them next to each other with the, uh, town tax, uh, agenda, so.
This is merely, and, and I should've labeled it better. These are the results. They had their school meeting and it is what it is. You can say you reject it, but that won't do any good.
Correct. I don't know if we've ever had that on a meeting as far as like, um.
Well, it's important for you to know that, and it gets recorded and it gets blasted all over, because seventy cents of every dollar that's collected in this community for taxes goes to school. That's a great thing. That's what makes Durham what it is. But that's seventy cents. That leaves only thirty cents, which covers the county, and the rest is your operation.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it, a different manager may have a different opinion.
No, no, I agree with it a hundred percent. I just, um, I don't, I don't think we need to read results or anything of that nature. They're all public record and they're all, um, easily accessible online if need be. Okay, well, thank you. Number nine, policy proposal, occupancy of foreclosed property.
May I explain?
Yes, sir.
In towns that I've worked on over the last few decades, when we finally are forced into foreclosing on a piece of property, oftentimes the elected officials are faced with a dubious task of having to decide whether they wanna take the property, not first of all, even though the law says they're at that point in time when they can do that. But they have hesitated. Example, double-wide pre-nineteen seventy-six trailers have a lot of asbestos in them. And so for the few thousand dollars that you're getting, is that really something that you want? In some cases, Aunt Lizzie lives in that trailer and is, and we're foreclosing. And no one wants to kick her out. But what we have found out over time is that that's an exposure of liability to you, the town. Cause you now become tech, technically the owner.
Right.
And you've gotta do asbestos abatement, among other things. And so this is one of those, don't decide on it tonight. Even the town's attorney said, where did this all come about? And, eh, by email. And, uh, it's just something that I bring with me from experience, make you aware of it. It's a policy. It doesn't preempt what the state law on tax liens requires. And there's step-by-step procedure to perfect the lien. And when you go to foreclosure, you have to decide whether you want occupancy or not. In case in point, by your own admission, there's one piece of property in this town that no one wants to own. It's because it was the toilet of the, the community for how many years? So if you look at it, give your, your thoughts in mind, what you might wanna do with it. You don't have to do anything. But if you do something, you should have a policy that is cogent with the state law, and this would do that. It gives you a backdoor out to say, we're not taking Mitch's property. We're sorry, there's just too many problems there and, and too much personal property that we're liable for. You've got fire insurance, liability, yada, yada, yada. That's what that is. Unfortunately, it sets a tone that others may play the same game. But it's the risk you take, and I'd rather have you not put the town in jeopardy by taking something and then becoming fully liable for it. Cause you can't unload it. Just a thought. No action required tonight. Uh, we can put it on Durol Business the next time, or thank you, Mitch, we'll decide if we wanna bring it up with the next manager.
Yeah, I think in the past, we've been, we've been, we've had a few circumstances over the years where properties have gone into default, et cetera. Um, and what this board in the past has tended to do is simply follow the law and our legal advice, um, pertaining to the law, as in Jack, our attorney. Um, sometimes, you know, it's, a policy's great, but if you have a policy, you have to follow a policy. Um, it doesn't really sometimes give you the wiggle room that you might need to not accept a property such as the old town dump or something of that nature that might be hazardous to the town, so. Um, but it is something to put into consideration and perhaps think it over and see how we wanna progress and move forward with it on the next round.
So we don't have any policy? Not that I'm aware of.
I'm not aware of either, and like I said, when this has come up in the past, when people, we've, we have negotiated, we have, we have done things like that. We have never, uh, that, the town has, don't get me wrong, just in our tenure, we've never really, to my knowledge, taken a property, but we've had to negotiate, cause it's gotten to that point of possibly us taking the property. Um, but it's always in tandem with the advice of our attorney.
Absolutely.
So, that's how that has played out in the past.
These are the things that policymakers have to do, just what you're doing now. Talk about it, think about it.
Which is when you go to town manager, former government, that's really our main role as policymakers. Okay. So we'll put that under consideration moving forward. With that said, and to lead right into it, no, you know, I don't know how that works out, but number ten, policy discussions. Old hall, town hall roof repairs, um, which we kinda covered, and also the additional flags for display, which we also kind of covered. So I'm not sure if there's anything, Mr. Town Manager, you'd like to add to those, um, or if those have been satisfied for this evening?
For this evening, and, uh, absent of anything else, I'll follow my notes. And if they are to be put onto the next meeting, you'll see them on your agenda under old business. Do you want me to follow that agenda format, or just continue with what we have now until you are a group of five?
I like the old business personally. That, that to me, I think is.
I think we can set it up as a trial for the next round, and if, uh, Mr. Nado is, um, you know, because, um, he is the chairman, if, if he finds fault with it, I'm, I can assure you he will bring it to our attention. And, uh. Yeah, he could be. I doubt it. No, he's not watching. Um, and we can go that, we can redirect from there. From, from right now, we can try it. And, um, the only thing I would suggest, and maybe I, we never used to do this in the past, but in the past, the public comment was pretty much upfront in the forward. Uh, that way people could get here and they knew they could be heard, you know, by six thirty, six forty. Now we have people lingering around for an hour, hour and twenty minutes, and perhaps we could move that back to its original spot.
Is that your wish, Mr.? I would be glad to do that. Actually, it should be number three.
No, number three or number, whatever, whatever one it was, but to get it to that point, it just, this way people have an idea what time they need to be here by, um. We're still gonna maintain the three-minute policy and, and, um, but it's just, it's just some, these people, you know, the.
If they wanna stay.
They wanna stay, they can stay, but sometimes they have to wait an hour, hour and twenty minutes to be heard, and that seems like an awful long time.
Yeah, I agree.
One thing I will say about the old town hall, uh, roof, the two guys that have looked at it say that, uh, we don't wanna be wasting too much time. Because it's brittle, it's falling apart. The, the shingles that are there.
Right.
Yeah, it's, are in tough shape, which is surprising to me. Looked at it and I didn't realize until the guys got up there and looked at it.
Do you have more bids coming, Todd?
I can't. I, I only was able to get those two. If you wanna give me a guy and.
No, I only saw the one. I didn't know we had two, so I apologize. It was Jack's.
Oh, Scanman gave us one, and Jack's property service gave us one.
I didn't see Scanman's. That's why I was, I thought there was only one, and I thought that was what.
I guess we didn't get it.
Okay, fair enough.
We didn't get it. What did I not give you? Did Bob bring it down here?
Eight plus.
Eight plus roofing, uh.
I don't think so.
He said he was gonna bring it down.
Okay.
Yeah, anyway.
Well, that, that one I think is, you know,
Give him one or two more.
As far as the agenda goes for next, I mean, it sounds like that one has to be on the higher priority list on the next one, and we have to actually make a decision next time around. Um, we're not changing any cosmetics on the building or anything of that nature, so we don't really necessarily need to involve, involve any of the committees or something.
Possibly change color, because there's only a few colors.
Isn't it black?
No, it's a greenish, greenish, white tint. I know.
Can't get, you can't get any colors.
Well, I think if, yeah, I'd go this way. If we're changing the color, we may wanna direct the town manager to ask the historical committee what color we may be changing or possibly have to change to due to shingles from nineteen forty-four not being readily available.
I already asked, yeah.
So by, by that rationale, Todd, if, if you change the color of the base roof and not counting the steeple, you have to get something. Cause isn't there a cap on the top of that? There's no shingles on it?
I think that's steel up there. On the steeple itself, I'm pretty sure.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I would say just go black or charcoal, whatever.
Whatever's available on the truck that day.
Nice blue roof, nice red one? Is that what you're thinking? So yeah, maybe we should ask, um, a member of the. You did, you did.
And they're okay with?
They're, they're discussing it.
Okay, so hopefully that you're gonna get with them and they can give us an answer of their findings on the next meeting? That's fantastic.
They'll take them up first.
I would think, I would think a charcoal would be very appropriate.
I think getting it done would be the most important thing, so.
Or in black, it sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, then I've got it down that you'll be reporting that for the twelfth.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay, moving right along, the consent agenda. Do we have a board member would like to request anything be removed? Or can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written, please?
I move to accept as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, and all those in favor? That's four zero, Mitch.
Thank you.
All right, the town, upcoming meetings and town news. We have a rescheduled town manager hiring committee meeting posted for June thirtieth of this year.
And that's old. Yeah, it's tomorrow.
Amendment to tomorrow, twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth, tomorrow, and time is different, too.
Gotta go old school.
Six o'clock, yeah.
So we're gonna be here.
All right, um.
Five thirty tonight.
To be late my last, here we go. We're gonna go town manager hiring committee meeting posted for June twenty ninth at six P M. at the town office, which will be an executive session, not open to the public for personnel matters. Do we have an executive session that we need to attend to tonight, Mitch?
I don't believe so. Pretty much through everything, and I'm pleased. Yeah, oath of office. I told you that our part-time counter clerk is doing very well. We request your final authorizations so that Cynthia Faragi can be sworn in in accordance with the duties that is, as a deputy registrar and a deputy clerk. That way she can handle all of the work. First day she started picking up on it.
Right, that's awesome.
With that said, we will entertain a motion for. That said, we will entertain a motion for Cynthia Faragi.
Faragi.
Faragi, the town of Durham, for the oath of office for, um, was it town?
Clerk.
Clerk and town registrar. Do we have a motion?
So moved? And I'll second that.
Joe seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote a four zero.
Excellent.
That's great. Good job, Mitch, and everybody else who had a hand in that. That was, that was a long time coming.
I have to tell you, the process that we've exposed our staff to in dealing, the members who are dealing with the town managers review are the ones who established the format.
That's great.
They had, they did the interviews, discussed it amongst themselves. Then they said trial by fire. And we brought in three candidates, paid them for their two hours' time.
Right.
Sat down afterwards, after each one, and eventually shuttled one. And so the process for them was they are the ones who selected, and I affirm, because then I found out more of the details about her capabilities, so we're in pretty good shape.
That's great.
Your staff did a good job.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Yeah. Team effort. That's what we want.
I have nothing else, sir.
Okay, with no further, uh, business of the town for this week, we will take a motion to adjourn.
May I have to go to executive session for tomorrow's meeting?
No, we're already in executive session.
We're already in executive.
For tomorrow, it's a carry, technically it's a carryover. Cause we said it for the.
Yeah, we carried that meeting over to next weekend.
For the interview of the next candidate.
I asked the same question, yeah.
We went over that beginning.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Do I have a second? Todd seconds. Is there any discussion? With that being said, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.